We call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us. Roll call, please.
Gary.
Here.
Grinberg. Pepcorn.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here. We're here to meet about the preliminary budget that we have to put forth. I'm gonna make some comments, and we're gonna have some comments from staff as well. So, North Dakota Code Century requires each governing body to make annually before August 10th, and make an itemized statement known as preliminary budget statement. Receive and file approved the 2019 preliminary budget and related tax levies. Establish a maximum level of expenditures. Changes can be made, however, we cannot exceed the total amount of the approved budget. So, we're gonna continue the initiatives we've had. Lease purchased border states electric corporate and its IT offices. Permanent flood protection. Working towards Red River Valley Water Supply Project. New treatment water plant. Focus on neighborhoods and code enforcement. Fostering strategic economic development opportunities. Opioid reduction efforts with treatment options. And a portion of the general fund funded through the capital project fund. Prioritizations this year will be reorganization of engineering inspections. Hiring a facilities manager. Fit up of border states electric corporate offices for new Fargo Police Central Headquarters. Waste water treatment plan expansion. New fire department pumper truck. Performing Arts Center and Civic Plaza Task Force. Proposed utility rate increases. Potential redevelopment of police department, health department, parkies departments, and Mid-America Steel locations. Implementation recommendations from the Special Assessment Task Force. You saw our revenue projections over...that have been placed out there. There are not many changes in that as far as from the last time I showed this to you. You have also our expense projections again, which is 1.9%. Overall, general fund budget is gonna go up 1.9%. We did wanna talk about proposed fee adjustments, just to get a little bit clarity for everybody in regards to this. Utilities are supposed to pay for themselves, and the city continues to grow. On many of these items, stormwater, they've been working quite a long time to try to figure out something that worked. And public institutional did change because it was too high of a jump for many people. So, we're gonna have...Jeremy Gordon's gonna talk a little bit about street lighting system. There were some changes that we thought about after last discussion with the commissioners. And Jody and Bruce or somebody else is gonna talk about wastewater, so.
Yep. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. So, this...so, the last slide was just the fee breakdown of the proposed increase. This is really spelling out how we got to those numbers. So, if you...so, one thing to keep in mind is that we're not simply just asking for more funds for street lighting. We're gonna roll all the traffic signals and the repair and maintenance and staff into this fund. So, it's not...it's not just extra money, it's extra staff and extra maintenance and repair. So, today, street lighting system has two staff members, and the budget's right around $2 million. Looking for next year, proposed is $2.1 million. And then, the new additional cost would be the traffic engineering. So, this year, 2018, it's $660,000. Next year, we're proposing it to go up by $40,000, up to $700,000. And then, what we don't have today in street lighting or traffic is any money set aside for projects. So, that's the zero you see today within its own fund. We use those...we use sales tax and street rehab to fund our projects. And next year, we'd...the proposed would be over $600,000 to do projects for repair and maintenance. So, the total amounts, you got today $2.6 million, next year $3.4 million. And how we got there was the rates that you see. Single family, raised $2. Multi-family, $2.50. And then, commercial, $8. So, since last week, we have reached out to the Nexus Group, who's been working on storm...who does a lot of stuff for us in utilities. But they're familiar with how the utility billing goes. And if...how we can make the commercial stuff, you know, larger lots have a fairer system rather than large lot, small lot, have the same number for commercials. So, we reached out to them. So, this is by no means final, but this is our first...first take at it. So, this still isn't a little bit of flux, but this is where we're at today.
Can you explain Commissioner Strand, because he was concerned about the commercial? A 75-foot lot, are you gonna do something different?
Yes. So, other cities...there are not too many other cities that do this. We're one of a couple. I think us and Bismarck are the only ones in North Dakota that do this. So, yeah, so, they...so, if you're not single family or MR, you're charged commercial regardless of what you are. In other cities, you know, if you have a 75-foot lot, you get X rate. And if you're anything over that, you get charged a nickel per front foot. So, we're looking at our system to see if that would...could easily be implemented with the way we bill, which makes sense. I mean, some businesses have big blocks, and some of them have just the frontage of a house that a house would have. So, we're looking into that.
Any questions about the Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman. So, Jeremy, can you talk a little bit? The one thing we do in some of the other departments is do more of a gradual...a gradual thing, and I think that would've been a lot more palatable to the...especially the residential. So, in the future, I think if we can do that...but it's been a long time since we've had...I mean, the streetlight fund, how long has that been in existence? And when's the last rate increase?
Yeah, so, we started this in '09. So, I think 2010 was the first year as part of the '09 budget. And these rates were set back then, so they'll have been in place for eight years without an increase. And you're right, looking back on it, we should've had incremental steps.
So, would it be possible...right now, it's at $2.50, and you're proposing at $4.50. So, would it be possible, let's say that we did it to $3.50, and then had future rate increases in the upcoming years of whatever, 2% or 4% or something like that? Is that possible, or is that gonna leave you in the hole?
No. So, what would end up happening is about a dollar for single family would...is about $300,000 total. So, that the annual capital outlay and the annual maintenance, that would basically go from $6.35 to $3.35, which is still better than zero. So, I think that's a good suggestion, so.
Would you wanna do it graduated, go up a dollar this year and $2...or another dollar the next year?
I'm open to anything. That certainly would work. But I will say, our...the number that we're getting today does need to be increased.
So, and I don't know how you wanna do it, Mr. Mayor, but to me, I would like to propose that if...especially if it's not gonna do any damage to the fund, to change it from going from $2.50 to $4.50 to going from $2.50 to $3.50. And I don't know how you wanna do that. Is that something?
Well, I mean, that's something we incorporate. If the question passes on it, that could be done. If you wanna make it a motion, and if you get support for that, that could be done.
Well, I don't wanna inhibit how it goes. And so, I'd be interested to hear anyone else's comments, too, but...
Commissioner Gerg.
It seems how we generally do things, is we do it in steps instead of, you know, $600,000 increase in one year, whatever it is. So, I think it's reasonable.
Mr. Strand.
I'm on board.
Need a motion?
So, I'll make a mo...I'll make that motion to change it from the schedule...the original schedule going from $2.50 in 2018 to $4.50 in 2019 to going to $3.50 in 2019.
Second.
Their second? Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. So, next, we go back into proposed stormwater fee structure change. Toby.
Mayor Commissioners, last Wednesday, which we met, this first slide is just depicting the new rates that we've determined to help fund increases for the stormwater fee structure. Monthly minimum for non-residential is the $8. And then, as kinda shown, it's all based on impervious area. So, larger lot, you got the more impervious you have as being the end user, the greater your fees are gonna be per month. On the next slide, I guess I'd like to kinda go ahead and make a couple different comments. I know I'd heard that the...looking at the revenue that the city's bringing in, going up from 1.7 to 3.1 million. And then, in relation to the special assessments also increasing at the same time. And I guess the reason for that is that we've got a backlog of projects presently. And what we're looking to do is go ahead and have actually more capital improvement projects. As part of that, there's a portion that's special assessed. So, as we do more products, the special assessments increase accordingly.
Mr. Gerg.
So, yeah, for me, this is a problem. You know, we've had many people speak out pretty loudly that special assessments just so bothersome that we're actually gonna have a special task force to address it. Now, we're going to a new fee structure for storm sewer. We're actually increasing tax on people, and then, we're increasing the amount we're gonna special assess them by three times. So, that's doing the exact opposite of what we're...the people are demanding that we do. So, I will not support this structure as it sits today, based on the special assessment and on the amount we're increasing in one year. Today's previous point, we're going from $1.6 million, that's a fee structure, to over $3 million in one year. And it's gonna stay that way for the foreseeable future.
I guess I can comment on portions of that. Presently, the infrastructure policy that we use, it hasn't changed between the 2003 and then the newer version we were using, we went back to it. So, the percentage is still a 50/50. And due to the size of the areas, when you do a storm sewer improvement for our lift station, we had two products within the last two years that were on that $400, $500,000 value. Assessing that with the areas, typically a residential lot, we get maybe $200 or maybe even less over a 20-year bond. That's, I think, a fairly decent return on...
And I get it. I mean, it's just a little bit here, just a little bit there. But we're doing that a lot lately, right? We're increasing your light tax for your streetlights. And we're just gonna test...ask you $200. Then, we're just gonna take a nickel here, and we're just gonna raise a half cent sales tax there. That's how we get to this point where people are getting taxed out of their houses. So, I don't wanna hear from anybody that it's just a little bit here, a little bit there. That's the problem.
Brenda.
So, in regards to our stormwater fee recommendations, so today, the most that we can spend on any of our projects is about $1.7 million, about. And so, we are following whatever our special assessment policy is, and whatever the task force comes out, we will continue to follow that. So, the graph, to me, is a little deceiving because we will not be increasing anyone's special assessments on any one parcel. It's just being able to take care of that maintenance that we need to take care on our infrastructure that's in the ground. So, the special assessment policy will be whatever the task force comes up, and then, we will be adjusting our capital improvement plan to meet your task force recommendations. And so, that's gonna be dependent...so, for instance, if the task force comes back and says, "Today, it's 50/50," maybe you're gonna come back and say, "We think the city should pay 70% of it." Or, maybe you're gonna say the city should pay all of it. I mean, it just depends on...that's gonna adjust how that graph reads. And so, that will change with whatever the task force recommendation ends up being.
Yeah, let me be clear. I wasn't blaming you guys. You didn't set the policy, we did. You know what I mean? So, I'm trying to convey to my fellow commissioners that, to me, this is unacceptable, and we need to find a better way to do it so we can fund your guys' projects.
But your specials aren't going up, it's just the volume of work you're doing is going up. So, it's a deceiving slide because it doesn't mean it's gonna...it was one level last year, and it's double that level this year because we're changing the policy. The specials will follow this policy we always follow, but you're having more projects.
Correct.
Part of the question we have in stormwater that people have asked me is that we...before, maybe that was just in your general taxes, we've always had a stormwater policy, but our footprint's getting so big, we have to have stormwater taken care of. And if we don't, if we have a huge rainfall, we're gonna flood a lot of basements. So, if you guys don't keep up with the pumps, we're gonna have trouble. And we used to have 20 pumps. We have how many pumps now?
Kinda just moving on to the next slide, we're just gonna give additional backgrounds. And when the original utility went into effect in 1998, we had 39 lift stations throughout the city. As of end of this construction season, we're gonna have 80. So, we've doubled the amount of infrastructure since the initiation of this storm.
And then, you went to public and institutional, found the rates were too high for them, you readjusted the policy for them. And what you're trying to do is people who don't have retaining centers or retention ponds, you're trying to make it fairer to the rest of the citizens. Commercial's gonna get hit the highest on this.
Correct. That's what...it was supposed to be redistribution, so the majority of the increases are still gonna be borne more by the larger impervious parcels.
So, the homeowner's gonna get $1 at it.
Correct. And they're based on impervious. Some smaller business units are actually, if they're on the one acre, are actually gonna pay less than the $15 they pay now. There's, I think, almost 1,000 or greater parcels in that category that are gonna pay eight bucks instead of $15, so.
And how long have you been working on this policy?
I guess it's been on the list to be done about the last 10 years. Myself, it's been about the last two years we've worked with AT2S, so we've done the financial modeling. We've got the growth, so we'll be back as we kinda discussed earlier, you know, successive years to hopefully have smaller increases than the larger jump we've got now.
And when you worked on the policy, do you feel this is the fairest policy you guys could come up with?
We looked at several different alternatives and went to other communities and looked at what their base policies were, and this is...seems to be the most fair down to the square foot and what your usage is of the system.
So, as a utility stand by itself, the new policy will help this utility pay for itself, will it not?
Correct. Because presently, Brenda said we're using 1.7 million. That's like our total budget that we pretty much use for majority of things, the actual construction, like doing repairs. We only have a budget of $350,000 a year. That typically makes me have to choose and pick between which projects we do, whether we do only outfalls, or where we do lift stations, or we do pond improvements. So, we're on a cycle right now, so we're not actually able to go ahead and achieve the level of service that I think the city is...
You're not keeping where you should keep.
Correct. Falling behind.
Commissioner Strand, did you have something?
It's the only other one bullet point they's had there, that 50% of our lift stations, so nearly 40 of those are within the 20- to 45-year range. So, there's at least 15 lift stations out there that haven't been touched since the 70s and 80s when they originally constructed, so we're...
Brenda, you on something else? No? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner? So, the 2019 budget does a balanced budget. It continued to commit between town flood protection, organization-wide capital improvement projects, no growth in the mills. Proposed modest fee adjustments in stormwater, streetlight, and forestry utilities. Overall, minimal increases in operating capital and personnel budgets. So, what our task today is to receive and file. We can't not go higher than this, but the commissioners do have an opportunity to help us wish it lower than expense or find other items that they want to change. Publish the budget will be August 10th or close to that. Suggesting a public hearing on the 10th. And then, I would say we would approve the final budget the next meeting we have, not at that hearing. I'd rather have the hearing in the public, give us two weeks if we need to make any changes, and do the final budget approval September 24th, if that's okay with the commissioners. And then, we meet the deadline that everybody wants. So, today, it would be to approve the preliminary budget, including property tax mill, 51 mills, schedule acquired, public hearing September 10th at 6:00 in current Fargo City Commissioner Chambers. Commissioner Gerg.
Hey, we're gonna hear from...there's obviously some firemen in the audience, so they wanna say something before we approve this thing.
Do you have a spokesperson? Well, first of all, we've never seen so many firemen in one room, so I think we should give them a round of applause for all the hard work they do for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Gerg, Mayor Mahoney. Commissioners and Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to join us here today as you discuss the city budget for 2019. My name's Eric Eisenler. I live at 1345 15th Street South in Fargo. I'm the president of the International Association of Firefighters, Local 642. Been a firefighter in Fargo for 17 years, and I'm currently a captain on the fire department. In May of this year, we met with all of you and presented a pay study where we compared wages of our employees on the fire department to other fire departments that served communities similar to Fargo. We found that after...apologize. We found that after adjusting for the different cost of living of all cities, Fargo had the lowest wages and benefits compensation of all cities considered. We also compared ourselves to other cities that we have lost firefighters to, and they are not internationally accredited. And again, found that we were the lowest when it came time for pay and benefits. We have never asked to be paid the highest, but we've only ever asked to be paid average. We are currently being paid 19% below average. While we understand that this is a large number, we feel it is important to address. These are the wages that support over 100 employees, families in our community. In my opinion, these men and women are certainly not below-average employees or citizens. We understand that this might not be an overnight fix and that this is not the sole responsibility of this city commission. This is a result of many years of slowly falling behind comparable market changes. We are understanding that it may take a couple of years to complete all adjustments necessary. We would like to work with you moving forward to bring our employees up to average. We have lost 10 firefighters already in the past four years. We're losing two firefighters in the next month. To other fire departments that pay more, or in some cases, just simply different professions that pay more. While this number might not seem alarming in the private sector, it is a large number in the fire service. It takes a lot to get into the fire service and a lot of training to become a fireman. Just this morning, there was a two-alarm fire at the Case Plant. Our well-trained, dedicated crews were able to extinguish the fire and prevent a significant loss to the community. Please consider fixing this problem and help us move forward, and know that we are here for you as well. Respectfully, Fargo Firefighters, Local 642. Appreciate you letting us speak. Thank you.
Mr. Gerg, you wanna respond to that? Your fire...fireman commissioner?
Yeah. We did meet together, and you expressed your concerns with me, and I think you did with the other commissioners as well. Since I've been a commissioner, we've done a 2% or more COLA increase every year that I've been here. You know, and even you compound that, that's millions of dollars that we're adding to the employees' benefits and pay. Quite frankly, in many cases, I think it was too generous for some of the folks. I proposed a different COLA for this year that would cost about half as much. It would address most of the firemen because it would raise the amount for people making less than $80,000 a year, and it'd affect more and more of those employees. But I don't think that's gonna pass. It's not what's proposed anyway in the budget. But we are making strides forward. We have added two grades to the pay scale specifically to address the firemen's concerns. And as you said, it won't be fixed in a day or a year. It will be a process because you are...there are so many of you guys. And any change that we make not only affects the budget at large, but other employees look at you guys and say, "Hey, they're getting something that I'm not getting." And there's a lot of issues that go with that. So, we have heard you, we see you, we know that you're...some of you are unhappy about this, but I hope that we can work together and with the understanding that in good faith, we're gonna do the best that we can with what we have.
Mike, do you wanna comment on this in PEC? We went through this in PEC and did a market survey, I believe. And the market survey we got from the team was different than the market survey we saw. So, if we went forward with a question of the 19%, wouldn't we have to relook at that and have a discussion?
Mayor and Commissioners, we're committed to doing that in the future years. We don't have study work planned for 2019, but to Commissioner Gerg's response to the local, we are adding two steps to the pay system next year. We actually have 25 of our 77 firefighters currently that are at the top of their grades, so they will see the 2% competitive wage adjustment and another couple of step increases as an interim measure, and then, we're committed to studying the process in the future as well with all of our employees organization-wide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Pepcorn.
So, I have one request. Could we...could we be shown what we should...you know, we've done these wage comparisons in the past, but just because we see different numbers. The firefighters show us one set of numbers, and then, our comparisons aren't always the same. So, my suggestion is why don't we have a meeting where the two groups, we could be there and just to show the numbers that we've had in the past, and in the future, make sure that we're looking at the same? Because I think that's been a common thing. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. I don't wanna drag this on, but just wanna let you know, we have asked to be involved with the PEC meetings before, and we were told they were a closed meeting and that we weren't allowed to be there. So...and then, to speak on, Commissioner Pepcorn, on your comment, the city's survey is exactly that. It's a survey. Our pay study is accurate, that one not so much. It's basically sent out, whoever replies back, those are the numbers you get. We actually use qualifiers when we came up with our numbers, and I think we explained that when we went through it with you guys. So, we're certainly willing to work with you moving forward, and we understand it's a big number, but it's important to us. And if there was some outlook that there's something on the horizon, it would sure help us with our loss of firefighters.
Mr. Chairman, so, one thing is, I'm not necessarily saying at a PC...PEC meeting, we could just have a meeting where...and Tony is the liaison or whoever you wanna do it, but to have a meeting just to show the numbers so we can talk about this, you know, there's two different sets that we're seeing. And so, I think that would go a long way to resolve that issue, so.
Mr. Gerg.
Yeah, having shared and agreed-upon assumptions is really important, because if you're working at two different starting points, it's hard to meet in the middle somewhere.
Yep.
So, I agree with you, and that should be set up soon, hopefully.
Union on union, size of city, what you do, what you have with your pay scale, how you do your pension fund, there's a variety of different things that go into your pay.
Yep.
We think we have a competitive salary. I don't believe it's 19% lower, but we're looking to.
Okay.
Thank you. Just a show of hands, how many are firemen out here? Okay, thank you very much. Eric, I'm curious, I know you met with us individually, but what type of proposals did you run up the flagpole? Did you...did you...I mean, I know you've identified the differences.
Yep.
But what type of proposals have been put on the table to start aiming us toward that direction or not?
The proposal was to...we met with Chief Dirksen, and what he came up with was just to get us simply to average, not the highest-paid firemen out there, just in the middle. And his proposal was to move firefighters into the same pay grade that police officers, patrolmen are in, which is the P20...or the P12. And that has 13 steps instead of 11. And then, also to move fire captains up one pay grade from 14 to 15. I think the budget impact was for firefighters, moving up was somewhere around $225,000. Now, I guess I don't know...
I think the total ask was over $400,000.
The total cost, right?
The total ask.
So, Chief Dirksen proposed moving everyone, with the exception of himself, up one grade to create, so we didn't have that compression factor. And that...that didn't go through. So, we saw that you added steps 12 and 13 to the current pay grade, but it amounts to about $3,000 in increase over a two-year period. And to be honest, it really doesn't touch the 19% difference. And we appreciate the COLAs, and we understand that COLAs happen, but to us, a COLA is not necessarily a pay raise. It's meant to keep us so that we can keep purchasing homes and goods and fuel and things like that to keep us up with the cost of changes in the community. But the 19% is never gonna change. And the cities we compared ourselves to also also had...or also have COLAs. So, if we compared ourselves to, say, Sioux Falls, in Sioux Falls, their pay is about where we would wanna be. They're gonna receive a COLA as well, and if we receive a COLA, we're still 19% back.
Mr. Strand.
Two items with regard to COLAs, I want to say this year it's 2%. Last year was 2%. The year before, I think, was one and a half or so. What's the morale in the department like? Are you concerned?
Yes.
And how concerned should we all be or not?
Our firefighters are always gonna give their best and do their job, but morale is definitely down. You know, when we lose...we train people and then lose them to another department, that costs the city money. Not only that, but then, we have to start over from square one with a new hire...new hired person. So, when we have people constantly leaving and a constant turnaround, it does affect morale. And, you know, many of us have second jobs to make ends meet, so it does not...the morale isn't great, but just rest assured that we're always gonna provide the service that we're being paid for. However, we wish that we were paid the same as the other departments we compare ourselves to. In many cases, the departments in Minnesota that we compared ourselves to, one of our members is leaving, taking the job in Rochester. He starts out in September. They're much higher than us, and they're a non-accredited fire department. So, I think a lot of it is...contributes to the difference between states that have collective bargaining and states that don't.[1779.18] bargaining and states that don't. Many of these states that have collective bargaining, they figure out their wages ahead of time. They work out a contract with the city administration. And then after that, we figure out, the city figures out what other projects can be done. And the employees are kind of put first, whereas in this system, it kind of seems like whatever's left over, we'll see what we have left if the employees can get something. So it kind of seems backwards and I know that's not your intention, but that's kind of how it comes off. So it does.
I absolutely disagree with that. Actually, capital is last on our list. Employees, employee salaries are number one on our list and that's what the commissioners have requested. That's what we've done. You guys came with us with a study. We looked at the study in thoughtfulness.
Sure.
It'd have to be fair to all the employees. So your $400,000 would be doubled or tripled if we had to treat all our employees fairly, which we always do. So the reality is, I can't just jump the firemen without looking at police, without looking at all my employees, public works everywhere else. I think, Commissioner Strand, this can go to a different discussion. I mean, this is not part of the budget talks right now. We've gone through the personnel requests and wages. As he says, we can look over the 19% and you can work it in the budget of the next few years. There's nothing wrong with that. But that's not what was advocated by their department. That was not what came forth through us. The union came to us and asked for the change in salary.
And, and in that vein, I guess what I'd like to know is, is the concerns raised by the fire department relative to wages, is that, is that similar with other departments? Like, would we find the same issue with, and mindset with the police department?
We just did a market survey and we really only had two or three positions that do not hit market. So, I mean, if you don't, your market survey, you have to do is what's payment around here? What's average salary? What people are making? We're not trying to be 19% below average. We're trying to be average salary or a little bit above. So we'll look at this. But again, if you have unions, you have bigger cities, you have different ways of paying the departments, Sioux Falls does things different, it's not all the same. So you have to look at the whole package. But this wasn't meant to be public hearing, so I'd rather cut off discussion and we could get to this another time. Commissioner Garrick can meet with you and we can have Jill talk to you and sit down and visit and try to see what we can come with.
I just wanted to be clear, did Chief Dirksen put in for raises for the fire department?
He put in for the raises as you talked, but you're talking about, I'm assuming you're not just trying to get 25 or 30 guys better. I'm assuming you're trying to get the whole department up better if it's 19% below.
At least.
That wouldn't be fair to all your rank and file. So to me, if you want to look at that, you've got to look at everybody.
And, and it is such a large number because there's so many of us, so it's tough. I understand. I, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Commissioner Peppler.
Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll read the motion. Approve the 2019 preliminary budget, including a property tax mill levy of 51 mills, and schedule the required public hearing for September 10th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the current Fargo City Commission chambers. That's my motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Further discussion. Mr. Garrick.
Just want to make a quick note that I'm going to vote yes for this preliminary budget because it can still change and it's part of the process, but I believe that there are significant things that we can do. You know, just to the fireman's point really about the needs versus the wants of some of this stuff, you know, we're still giving money to things like the Art and Social Services Fund. That's $400,000, what was it, $400,000? That could be your pay raise right there. So we're paying for stuff that doesn't need to be paid for while we have unhappy employees. So I'm digging into the budget. I'm going to ask for the employees to help me out, look at a few things. But, you know, our, our general fund budget went up to 200, $102 million. Then we took $4 million out, put it in a different place, said, okay, the budget only went up by 2%. That's not what happened. So this budget is 6% higher than it was last year and then we did some, some different things, moved some stuff around. So a lot, a lot of work needs to be done with this and I look forward to working with the mayor and the commissioners.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have a whole bunch of questions. Can somebody apprise us of what the millages advanced forward from the park district and the school district and the counties might look like this, or do we know?
Do we know that, Kent?
Commissioners, that information is being gathered as part of this public process and all the preliminary budgets will be consolidated together and all of that data will be released on August 31st by Cass County. They will be sending notices out to all of the property owners that have a tax bill in excess of $100. So that's forthcoming. We haven't surveyed the other taxing entities, so we're not aware of what they're doing.
Well, I checked with Mike Mount Plazer, Commissioner Strand, and the school board appeared to be the same because I really can't go any higher. And the debate on the county right now is whether to add a three mills to handle state radio and, or ask for a, for a sales tax. And that's something commissioners have to think about. So there would either be a sales tax for one year to cover that cost or there would be a mill levy of three that goes for three years to cover the cost of state radio. That's the only awareness I know of the county, what it wants to do. And park board, as far as I know, is maintained.
And if I might continue, Kent, maybe if you could come back up again, please. A couple of different questions, as long as you're there. What's a mill worth going into the next budget for Fargo City?
I believe the mill count is about $557,000.
Okay. And if we could touch on the topics of the Budget Stabilization Fund? I know Commissioner Grinberg had expressed concerns about that as well and I have concerns there too. Could you highlight the status of our Budget Stabilization Fund, where we've been, where we are now and where we're going?
One moment, please.
John, don't you mean fund reserve? Stabilization?
Stabilization Fund, the rainy day fund.
Yeah, the city has operated a rainy day fund for many years. It started back in the furnace era and it peaked at a total of about $5 million. In the last three fiscal years, we've drawn money out, $700,000 in, in 2017, $1.2 million in 2018, and, and $1.2 million in 2017. And the balance after this year's transfers that have been included, I think it's somewhere around $200,000 to $300,000 left in the fund. So essentially, we've used the resource that we set aside in the good years. We've drawn on that fund to stabilize this budget and to be able to meet our obligations for the last three years. We now don't have that resource anymore. It's been expended.
So if I might continue, Mayor. With our reserve fund, we have a minimum statutory or a minimum policy requirement of 25%. What is, in your estimation, or do we have a policy, what our Budget Stabilization Reserve Rainy Day Fund should be at?
With regard to that, it, I think it's, I think it's stated at a goal of 10%. But then it said we should revisit that during the budget process to see if we need to make deposits in or draw money out. It's also restricted to a loss and tied to a loss of revenue. And that was the reason why access that fund is because the state aid started to tank at a fairly high rate of speed and we felt it permissive to use that fund in light of the language of how it was drafted. So I think it's a 10%, additional 10% on top of the 25% that we already have for the general fund.
I guess my thinking, Mayor and Commissioners, is between now and our finalization, if we can find some way to stabilize the Budget Stabilization Fund some more, I'd be very open to any way we could get there. If you have advice or not, Kent, I'm not sure if you're concerned or not about this or maybe I'm overreacting?
Well, in, in the end, you need to manage your fund balances. That's the goal of having a sustainable, sustainable future, is to make sure you're not constantly degrading. In the last four fiscal years, we've, if I look back at our net surplus in the general fund, it was 3.9 million about four years ago and then it was about 2, 2 million or so, and then it dropped to 1.0 million point five. And last year, we actually went negative. So you're seeing a trend line that's drawing on our resources. Now we've tipped over to the point where we're in a deficit. And that's largely as a result of two things, in my opinion. It's as a result of cutting taxes is one of the issues. And the other issue would be simply the, the decay in, in state aid. At one time, three or four years ago, we might've been getting eight, seven to eight million dollars in state aid and now we're getting about $6 million in state aid. Four years times two is $8 million revenue loss right off the back of one revenue line. So my point in all of this is, these budgets are getting a lot tighter. And when I can reference something you can stick in your head, for the last, the last three years, I believe our general fund budget growth was 1.4%. That's below the cost-of-living index overall. And so we've really tightened the hatch down on this budget process. And, and to answer your question more directly about, am I concerned about stability? Certainly. That's our job to maintain stability and continuity and make sure we can continue to flourish. With regard to the trajectory of state aid, we think that's bottomed out now as a result of the increased oil activity in the state and we think it's starting to rise again. So we might have timed this fairly appropriately in the use of that resource. All I can say is, if we do have growth in the state aid beyond the levels that we projected in our budget, I think the Finance Committee and the Budget Team would certainly recommend keeping that on the radar to make a deposit back into that fund because one never knows when a rainy day will come.
Mr. Garrick.
John, I think, I think you are overreacting. We have multiple reserve funds in the, in the city and now we have two reserve funds just for the general fund. That's, that's, that's not good. People are looking at us and saying, you're raising my taxes, my property taxes are too high, my specials are really high. And then they look at the city and go, you have $35 million in reserve. What are you doing? Why are you raising my taxes then? State looks at us and says, you want more for schools? You want more for roads and bridges? You've got $30 million in reserve. Use that, you know? So there is a danger of, of holding too much money in reserve. Now, am I saying raid the piggy bank and let's, let's spend it like crazy? No. But once we get to that, that 25% mark, we talk about buckets all the time in that state, right? When it overflows the bucket, you use that money, you know? So you still have it in reserve, it's still there for rainy day, but you don't have multiple, multiple accounts. They're all reserve, rainy day, bad day, kind of okay day. You use it when you need to and then you give money back to people when we don't need it. So I do not want that fund to even exist, quite frankly.
Mr. Chair. So Kent, can you talk a little bit? We're required to have reserves. I mean, with a budget this, aren't we required by the state to have a certain percentage in reserve?
No, actually, it's not required by the state, but it's a best business practice of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board and they suggest having a reserve. And when you establish that reserve, you need to evaluate the volatility of your revenue sources. So if all we did is collect property taxes and we had the ability to collect 100% of our budget from property taxes, that'd be like a guarantee, we're going to get that money. In the city of Fargo, property taxes are only about 25% of our total budget. We have state aid, we have construction-related revenues, we have interest income. Those are bouncing around like crazy. And so there's volatility in these revenue sources that need to be monitored and they need to be watched very carefully from year to year. As you've been here as a commissioner, you've seen the revenues bounce around in, in a big sort of way. So yes, having a reserve is a good thing and it's a best business practice.
Well, and that's what it is, is that's why we have an excellent bond rating is because we have a reserve. That, that's called good management of a business. That's what you do. You don't spend all your reserves. If you don't have any experience in business or how it goes, then you don't realize this, but that's what you do. We have a fairly large budget, so you have to have a reserve, period. That's good business practice.
Mr. Strand, did you have any other questions?
Well, I, I have some more concerns and thoughts. I'm wondering, I'm worried about this group out here in our audience today and I'm wondering what it would take to, to address their concerns in a way that shows some, some movement toward their, their, their needs. I know if a mill is, we know what a mill is worth and we know that their request was 400 and some thousand. I'm trying to discern if the fire department's in a different state relative to the police department or other departments, public health and all of our other, our sections of the city, but, but there's nothing higher in a priority for the, the people than public safety.
John, the union brought this to all commissioners several months ago. We've listened to it, we went through PUEPAC, we've gone through that. Police chief, or the fire chief came in to us, made his recommendations, worked with this group. We can work it, but we don't have an additional half a million dollars in the budget right now. If you want to find another half a million, it, it's just not fair and it's not fair to your other employees. We go through things and we look through things, that's what you do in a measured market study. Their market study was biased their direction. Our market study was a different direction. If you look at both market studies, our HR department says they're paid market wage. When you look at theirs, they're 19% under. You've got to merge that data, but I can't solve that today. That has to be discussion. We're worried about the morale of the fire department. We want them to be happy to work for the city of Fargo, but you can't solve that today. You have to look at the data. And we do have an opportunity, we've talked about this mid-year adjustment next year. You have an opportunity over the next six months to study this after a measured discussion and come up with a recommendation. You may have one commissioner goes against it because it increases our expenses, but I mean, it takes time to look at something in a thoughtful way.
Mayor, could the market study that the city did be shared with some of us so we could compare ourselves?
Mr. Pepphorn, you looked at it in PEC Commission.
I wouldn't mind seeing it myself too, though.
And I'm sure if you want to get a copy of it, John, we can get it to you. So, and, and I actually, that's what I was talking about, maybe if you want to, what I would suggest then is to have Tony and John have, have this meeting with our HR and with the fire, fire department representatives and then you can see. But like, like you said, this is not, all, all we're doing today is receiving and filing the budget. We're not having the whole thing discussed today. So, but to me, that would be my suggestion, but.
We're receiving and filing a budget, but this is our moment to input the preliminary acceptance of it. I'm, I'm concerned about our staff and I'm concerned about the indication, the information, you know, whether things go through PUEPAC or through finance, some of us can't attend those meetings. You know, so it's not like it's readily available information to me, anyway. And, and I, so if I could get, in the meantime, access to what our market study said and especially in comparison to the fire department's information, I'd, I'd appreciate that.
Mayor, take your shot now.
Any other discussion?
I have one question, Mayor. We always have growing needs and we have a growing community, but we, we have a sentiment in our community that, that they want us to really hold the line and pull in our belts. And then there's that balance between services and, and what you can provide and what you can afford. And yet, we also know that the city's only one part of the bigger picture with regards to the overall millage for the counties and the schools and the parks and, and so on. My question is, this is relative to our reserve fund of 33 or so million and, and our requirement to be at 25% of our general fund. Is there room or is there a desire in our commission to, to show any, any additional relief, one or two mills to the public with regard to the mills and, and reducing the general fund or the reserve fund accordingly? Do any of you have that desire? Because I do.
John, we've done a really astute, a tight budget. Last year, we had a 95% operating. Costs of wages and costs of the city have gone up 5.7%. We have taken only the growth. We haven't increased our mill levy. We've taken only the growth. You want to cut it two mills, you better tell me which firemen, which policemen you want to fire because that's what's going to happen. If you cut it any closer, when we went from 23 people that wanted to be hired to 29 people wanting to be hired, we had 4.75. This is the tightest budget we have. We have firemen upset about their wages, we have different things going on. You cut two more mills, you're going to cut personnel. So just tell me who you want to cut.
The reserve. I would take two mills.
You can't take any more money out of your reserves. You're down to 34 million and your stabilization fund is negative right now. If you do that, then your bond ratings go up, then you pay more money for all your bonds. I mean, there's a variety of ways you can do it, but, you know, if, if you want to restart looking at that, then that's something we should talk about. But this is as tight as we have been and, and you want to make it tighter, we're going to fire people.
Is, is Commissioner Grinberg on the phone?
No.
Oh, he's not, okay, because I'm, I'm guestimating and assuming this discussion on reserves will, will be at the legislature again this year, too, in January. And they're going to, they're, they scrutinize public government subdivisions a lot about their reserves, and, and we're well above what our threshold is.
When you get into reserves and you're talking legislative body, they're talking about a variety of different things. The city of Fargo is one of the best economic-run cities in, in the state. And Bruce, I'll have you stand up to this one, is that the, the reason certain things are done, Bruce and Mike and Kent, and, and we've gone over and over the budget, this was a very difficult budget to do. The reserves are set at a certain rate that sets a stabilization for when we go out to bond and do capital projects, also to pay our people, to do different things. If you continue to whittle that, you're not going to have enough revenue to pay all the bills. So Bruce, I'll have you just, I just want them to understand how hard the budget is. It's not as simple as, let's just cut two mills right now, that you've done the final.
Well, we went into the budget process without looking at the reserves, looking to not utilize the reserves. That's what you have in front of you tonight. I think what Commissioner Strand is saying is, what if you went into those reserves? We, we didn't consider that in this budget. So, we worked within the revenue projections and then matched up expense projections to try and be balanced.
Mark is late. Good timing. Your ears were probably burning.
Commissioner Grinberg, bringing up the date, we're just in a final discussion before the vote on what we're going to go forward, and Commissioner Strand brought up a point of perhaps dropping mill levies by two, tapping into the reserve fund. We've had a rather heated discussion, and I'm not sure that that's the best idea, after budget committees worked quite hard at this budget, and we did not consider two-mill debt reduction. My concern if that happens is we will have to let personnel go, so. And, John, you thought he had some comments on reserve fund?
I'm just curious, Commissioner Grinberg, if you have a sense of legislatively where this topic may go conceivably with regard to government subdivisions and their reserves? Our policies call for a twenty-five percent level, we're at thirty-three-plus-million now. I'm just, you know, do you have, do you think that will be coming at us again this next session? And do you have thoughts or concerns or advice for us? And I believe in honoring the reserve accounts and, and the savings.
Chairman, members of the commission, apologize for my lateness, but I had a commitment in Bismarck and just landed a few minutes ago, so glad I caught the tail end of this. I did spend a little over an hour earlier with Kent Costin going through the budget in detail, so I had a better command of what was presented and we first talked about. So, just wanted to make that point. I know there's some concerns with the, you know, the firefighters and salaries, but this is a lean budget. As far as predicting what the legislature is going to do, you know, all I can say is, what I hear and the numbers I've seen, it's still going to be a tight session. I don't, I'd make the prediction, I don't know if we're going to be experiencing a change in percentage and fund balances, but we don't know that. We don't even know what the new legislative makeup is until November, so, you know, my point earlier with Mr. Costin was, I wanted to understand the history of our fund balances and our reserves. That's quite comfortable where we're at and where we've come from the last two years into this budget, so we're not using reserves again. And, and so, you know, given the fact that we're balancing this on new growth and holding a line on mill levies, I think is a prudent thing at this point, given the presentation.
Kent Costin.
Thank you for your discussion on bond ratings and other such items related to that. Can you step away from the budget process a bit and look at the big picture? We issue a lot of municipal debt. We just got done issuing special assessment debt, and during our bond rating with Moody's, they watch us like a hawk. They do analytics of our numbers, they do analytics of our fund balances, and they give us the benefit of the doubt in light of the current flat revenue projections and the loss of fund balance we've already received. They gave us a double-A-one rating, but they changed the outlook from stable to negative. That's a key indicator about where they might be going in the future, and I'm of the opinion, I'll say it straight out, that if we don't change the trajectory of our budget and, and maintain these reserves and things start to look a little brighter, we will get a downgrade in our bond rating. I just want to be very clear about that, that has been widely announced, but it's certainly relative to how you choose to manage the city. And a downgrade from a double-A-one bond rating to one notch down would be several basis points in millions of dollars that we use for special assessment debt. It will drive the cost of the special assessment debt up, because our financing costs will be more. And then we're issuing government general obligation bonds for City Hall. We did, we're lucky to get those in two years ago at somewhere around two-point-four percent, but you have to be looking at the city in, in a holistic fashion to see that we're managing appropriately, and we're managing with a goal of sustainability. And, and if the numbers can't come together, you need, you need to make those hard decisions. So I'm just, I just want to put that out there, that that's, that's something you may not be keenly aware of, but that's being monitored as we speak.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I will, this is great information, I appreciate the dialogue, and I, I believe that we all have similar concerns about the reserves and, and the budget and, and the rainy day fund. Here's where I'll land today. I'm supporting the process of our, our budget going forward as proposed by the mayor. I've, I've also influenced this budget like other commissioners have, we've inputted to it significantly, and our fingerprints are all over it. I would, I would appreciate, however, just the caveat of, of, of the market pay study for, for our workers, especially with regard to the fire department. If I could get that information clear on there and reserve the right to advance that topic forward as we approve, approach our final budget, that's where I'm, I'm landing today. And thank you all for your good work, and thank you all to your citizens who are showing up. This is, this gets our attention, and, and we're all on the same team, so thank you for that.
So you've got a commitment by two commissioners, you're going to look at this, and we're going to try to figure out what's going to go up. We want your morale not to be down, so we're going to keep working on it, and you have all the commissioners concerned about this, we'll look into it. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Grinberg.